What the allegiance to the like of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item of business is a public hearing on Peterstownship budget amendment. Mr. Law?
Sure. Each year, Peterstownship Council amends the existing operating budget to adjust appropriations to accommodate significant departures from the approved spending plan. The need for an adjustment of appropriations is associated with one of three circumstances. Within the Public Works Department, wages paid to employees are allocated across a variety of program areas. While the total amount of allocated wages in the budget across all programs is accurate, the allocation to individual programs often needs to be adjusted. The budget adjustments are offsetting and as a result do not impact the overall budget. This year, the amount of additional funds spent for work associated with the Public Works Building was offset by a decrease in funds expended on storm sewers. So if you look at that chart, you can see those amounts and the offsetting amounts. Secondly, the need to adjust the budget is for projects that were anticipated to be completed and paid for in the prior year but were carried over into the current year. For 2021, these projects include the fire alarm system in the municipal building, the Public Works Department's brine system, the construction of Rolling Hills Drive, and the automatic doors at the community recreation center. Finally, there are expenditures that were not anticipated at the time of the adoption of the budget. The budget underestimated the amount of grant revenues under the liquid fuels program by $19,102, as well as the local share program by $58,804. These additional funds were expended to reduce the township share of the 2021 paving program by approximately $77,900. The 2021 budget anticipated the issuance of a bond to finance the construction of the Aquatic Center and the fire station. Neither of these projects moved forward. Then, in addition, there was the refinancing of the 2013 bond issue. And because that bond wasn't issued, this resulted in an overall reduction in debt service payments in 2021. The bid for the HVAC system in the library exceeded the budget by approximately $100,000. Council was made aware of this when the project was awarded and concurred with my recommendation to proceed with the project. There was recently a hardware failure on the computer network that resulted in an unanticipated expense of $16,000. So what's up here are the changes in the general fund and beyond the, what we have talked about for Public Works. As council is aware, we've had a difficult time finding a new building inspector, and as a result of that, we've been able to continue to provide that service by using third-party contractors. Normally, those contractors, we would anticipate spending about $30,000 a year. We are probably by year's end going to spend as much as $150,000. Now, having said that, there was, there has been a reduction in the salary costs because we don't have a building inspector, but nowhere near offsetting that. If there is an offset, it's that the amount of building activity this year was substantially higher than what we normally expect, and as a result, we're going to take in about $275,000 in fees where we anticipated that they would be closer to $175,000. This is what I was talking about in terms of the liquid fuels money. The liquid fuels money actually came in slightly higher. There's lots of reasons why expending that money quickly makes sense, and by doing so, it reduces the amount of money that the township would have spent on the tax dollars for the roof program. Again, we went through, I went through the bulk of these with regard to the capital projects. It's additional money for the network administration, money that was spent for improvements principally to the, to the library. The fire station money is actually a project that was carried over that should have, that we anticipated would have been done last year and ended up being done this year. The brine system is a project that we thought would have been done last year, was carried over to this year. The additional money in highway maintenance is for Rolling Hills Drive, again, something that we anticipated being done last year and got done this year. The $72,000 at the community center is the doors, and this was a project under the cares, with cares funds, and it wasn't completed until this, this year. And then, a local share, the same thing as liquid fuels. We received an additional $58,000. Money in that, in that fund is used for the highway program, and we use that fund, those monies rather than use tax dollars for the highway program. And then finally, what I talked about were the bond issues. We didn't do that, the large bond issue that we anticipated doing this year. That resulted in savings because we didn't have that debt service and principal payment. And then, the refinancing of the bond itself resulted in savings of about $200,000. So the intent is to put this on the docket for the next meeting and to approve the budget amendment for the 2021 budget.
Is the budget amount changing, or is it breaking, like, are we breaking even?
It's, the terms of the impact on the fund balance, it is minimal because, again, a lot of these things were things that were anticipated to be done last year and weren't. And then, it's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars to the good because of the failure to, or the fact that we didn't do the bond issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Law, we have been told that in the financial reports, our real estate transfer tax is exceeding what we anticipate.
Yes.
But that's not really reflected in here. Is there a reason you wouldn't?
Well, the reason you wouldn't is that generally what you're budgeting for and what you're required to do these amendments for are where, places where expenditures are exceeding the allocated amount.
Okay. But you acknowledge the building permit excess, and that was why I was...
Yeah. And the only reason we chose to put that in there is that you have such a large increase in the expenditures over where we thought they would be. We thought it was important that council understand that, to some extent, that was But you're absolutely right in terms of the general fund, tax revenues have exceeded what we anticipated.
I move we close the public hearing on the 2021 Peterstownship budget amendment.
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. I'm excited of his approval of the minutes on the October 25 meeting.
So moved.
Any discussion in that?
Just an ask that they would go through and check some of the spelling. There are a few spelling errors.
Okay. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special reports? There are none. Audience comments? Are there any comments from the audience?
I'm Irene Changal, and I live at the Waters', and we just wanted an update on the cell phone.
One of the things that AT&amp;T had indicated that they were going to do, and I believe that construction is done, they were going to do an amplifier system with inside of the Waters' on the first couple floors to be able to improve cellphone service on the AT&amp;T network. In addition to that, I was following up with the individual who is spearheading their effort. One of the things they're talking about doing is rather than to do simply a microcell tower on prior, they're actually in discussions with Waters' about putting a, what in essence would be a full tower on top of their building, so that it would not only solve the problem inside the Waters', it would solve the problem back in the plan as well. So they're exploring that right now.
I want to make it clear that we're not holding anything on council.
Nope.
That, I mean, we've, there's legislation, we have an ordinance, but this is all on companies.
Yeah, this, this is...
The providers.
The providers. And if anything, what I, they're on a, on a regular once a week call to make sure that they're moving that along, so.
Did I, I think I saw, did I see something that somebody said it was our fault, or they had heard that it was us that were holding this?
It's not the township holding them up.
Thank you.
Mr. Law, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Ball.
Go ahead, Dave.
Just a quick question to follow up on that. I think I may have written you this because I did get an email from someone who thought it was all our fault. But is there any way that the township could try to proactively identify places where towers could go to try to say, hey, we have these sites, if anyone's interested? I don't know, I'm asking.
I would say, it would be difficult to do because we don't own that property. The other thing is that wherever those sites would be, they'd have to conform to the township regulations.
Right.
So for instance, one of the things that we have done, again, with AT&amp;T, but quite honestly, it's being designed to handle multiple carriers, is that one of the things that our ordinance promotes is co-location.
Right.
And so what we're talking about doing is putting a monopole at the end of the football field. They're going to provide sports lighting for the township. We're going to provide space for, for an antenna, and quite honestly, we're going to lease that space to them, and the township will be, be the recipient of those revenues. And it'll be designed in such a way that not only can it handle AT&amp;T, but if another carrier were to come in. But I don't know how many, I can't think of other places where that works.
The high school fields up on top. They were entertained by Verizon, I think, at some point in time, but the school district...
When they have PV, PV on the other side is at the top of the hill.
Well, that's where they were talking, was at that very, at the very top of PV on the light poles that are up there.
Up to this point, however, I will say that the utility companies have been hesitant to identify their signal strength maps. They seem to regard them as classified information. And without the signal strength maps, it's very difficult to identify places where you need towers. Without knowing where you need towers, it's pretty difficult to say, okay, here's a piece of property where, go. And those, as we all know, are continually changing, so.
And the approach that AT&amp;T is taking is what we're used to. It's, it's a carrier coming in saying, we want to, we want to, we need a tower, and us trying to facilitate that in accordance with our ordinance.
You've got to go back 10 or 15 years when all of Western Pennsylvania was in battles with the cell tower construction process.
Yes.
And some law firm that I know made a lot of money defending the townships.
Okay. I think she has a full, quick question.
Do I go up there?
Yes.
Yes.
Two questions. Can you let us know who you are working with to communicate with the residents, like, who at the Waters' are, is AT&amp;T working with?
Well, they're dealing with, they're dealing with the person who is the manager, the local manager at the site, but they're dealing with the people in Minneapolis right now.
Oh, okay.
Because that's where they need to get permission from. The people here are supportive of what AT&amp;T wants to do. They don't control this building site. It's controlled out of Minneapolis.
Right, okay.
And AT&amp;T is in touch with them.
Okay, now, who's paying for all this?
Well, if it gets installed, it'll be AT&amp;T that will pay for it.
Oh, AT&amp;T will pay for the, whatever it is they put on the roof?
Right. And whatever work has been done inside of your building on the first two floors, AT&amp;T paid for that as well.
Okay. Now, what if we have a problem with the roof? How heavy is this thing?
Well, that's not for us to figure out.
You know, it's up to them.
That's up to AT&amp;T, the architects for the building.
No. And how, are we, see, we don't have AT&amp;T. There's like maybe, I don't even, I didn't do a count to how many people have AT&amp;T. So how long, oh, well, we have to suffer.
I don't know the answer to that question.
You don't know that?
Nope.
So we'd have to contact the manager or AT&amp;T to answer these questions, or whoever?
Well, I don't think AT&amp;T can answer that question for you right now. I, I expect that it could be as much as a year before that work's done.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's what we heard.
Yeah, it's not next week, that's for sure.
Oh, I know that, yeah. Okay, so we just tried to...
The solution may not affect anybody but AT&amp;T.
Yep.
It's not necessarily going to be all Verizon's or...
Well, yeah, that, because, so we're going to be stuck. In other words, you're saying, then we're going to have to change our providers, our provider to AT&amp;T? Is that what you're saying?
I don't think that's what he's saying.
I'm just saying, it may only be limited to AT&amp;T.
Customers.
Customers that we don't know.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, that's what I...
I don't think Mr. Lewis knows.
Okay, so in other words, then I'm going to have to change all my cell phone, I'll have to change over...
You don't know that until they put it in. I don't know.
No, but let's say they don't put it in.
If what, AT&amp;T doesn't put it?
No, these other, whatever we're going to have...
AT&amp;T, maybe whatever they do might solve your issue. We have no way of...
Okay, so we have to just issue all our questions to them?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Unfinished business, there is non-new business, firmly execution of a memorandum of understanding between Homeland Security and Peterstownship for the purpose of reimbursing Peterstownship for the joint operation expenses.
Yeah, the Peterstownship Police Department, with the assistance of Homeland Security, is investigating the local crime that involves out-of-state suspects. Under the terms of the agreement, Peterstownship will be reimbursed for travel costs associated with serving a search warrant, possibly arresting the suspect and returning them to Washington County prosecution. Because of the nature and timing, I instructed Chief Grimes that he could execute that agreement so that, in fact, it did not hold up the investigation. But what's needed tonight from council is, is to affirming the execution of that agreement.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Just a question.
I have a discussion. Go ahead.
Go ahead, no, you go ahead, Frank.
I, I just had a little bit of concerns about the agreement because, you know, if you read it, it does not seem to be limited to this specific episode, in that the duration is basically in perpetuity until somebody terminates it in writing. And I, I don't want to get to the position where, you know, we're devoting officer time to additional joint efforts, but, but recognizing that, I don't have a problem with it, I'm going to go ahead and, I'm going to vote in favor of it, I just want to, I just wanted to ask that maybe you, you put this on the agenda down, like, maybe next year so that we can review it and to see whether or not we want to get out of it.
Yes, and, and I think that one of the reasons why it's, it's worded the way it is, is that there could be more suspects involved in this case.
I just wasn't sure, so, but I'm going to go one...
I understand what you're saying, but I will tell you this, if there was, if there's another case where this comes into play that's, you know, separate from this, we will be back to council.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Curie asked my question, so we're good.
Okay. Any other discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Resolution approving solely for the purposes of internal revenue, the issuance of the tax exempt bonds by Mount Lebanon Hospital Authority on behalf of St. Clair Memorial Hospital.
So the Mount Lebanon Hospital Authority recently approved the issuance of a note on behalf of St. Clair Memorial Hospital to refinance its existing debt and for the purposes of providing funds for the construction project at the hospital's Peterstownship outpatient facility. The aggregate principle of the bonds is not to exceed $16 million. The issuance of this note by the Mount Lebanon Hospital Authority does not affect the bank qualified status of Peterstownship's debt, the township's debt limit, or the township's credit rating, and I've confirmed that with Mr. Mills, the township's bond counsel. Council's approval is needed to satisfy a portion of the Internal Revenue Code so that the bonds can be offered on a tax exempt basis. As stated in the resolution, a portion of the bond proceeds is intended for the renovations of the Peterstownship outpatient facility. As council is aware, the township's in a dispute with the hospital over the site plan, and until that's resolved, the township will not be issuing a building permit or occupancy for the project. And the resolution recognizes that by stating that approval of this is not, is, does not constitute approval of the project. And this whole question is coming to a head because the, the hospital has now filed building permits, a request for building permits with the township, and that's currently being reviewed. That being the case, it's still my recommendation that council move ahead and approve Resolution 110121 authorizing the, the issuance of the tax exempt bonds. We have council from the...
Ken Rodig from representing St. Clair.
Yes.
Anybody have questions on that?
So this is particularly just about them refinancing bonds for construction.
Exactly. Just as the township issues bonds to finance your capital projects, the hospital does as well. One difference is that under the Internal Revenue Code, hospital bonds require there to be a public hearing held, an approval of the location where the facility is located, as well as the location of the issuance. So we have all our approvals in Mount Lebanon to issue the bonds, and the majority of the $16 million will be used to refinance some existing debt of the hospital, to realize some savings. But they've earmarked $2 million of the proceeds for expansion of renovations to the outpatient clinic, and we cannot issue the bonds unless we have your approval. I understand you have issues with the hospital, and those need to be resolved, and so that's within your control. This is a separate issue. We just cannot issue the bonds to provide the funds to pay for costs.
Are you taking exception to the wording of the resolution?
Excuse me?
Are you taking exception?
Oh, no, no, I drafted the resolution.
I was going to say, he drafted it.
No, no.
He's asking.
No, no.
Because, you know, I feel that St. Clair seems to have been a pretty good partner in the township. They've helped out some of the other nonprofits. I don't see there's any reason why we would withhold the authorization or the resolution to authorize their bond. The whole idea of the building permits and all that, I think council needs more information about that to find out what's going on.
And resolve that in due course.
Yeah. Well, I'll make a motion that council approve Resolution 110121 authorizing the issuance of tax exempt bonds by Mount Lebanon Hospital Authority on behalf of St. Clair Memorial Hospital solely for the purpose of complying with the Internal Revenue Code.
Second.
Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining. I'm on the board of the hospital.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
Will we be able to talk a little bit about this in executive session?
We can.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution accepting and adopting Rolling Hills Drive as a township street.
So final step for the Rolling Hills Drive project is, is the adoption of a resolution to incorporate the roadway into the township's system of public roads, and by recording this resolution in the Washington County courthouse, the police will be able to enforce traffic laws, and the township will receive liquid fuels for its maintenance. I think the other thing is it will actually show up on Google Maps at that point, too. So it's my recommendation that Peterstownship Council approve Resolution 11221 accepting and adopting Rolling Hills Drive as a township street.
So moved. Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Prequalification contractors for Rolling Hills Park Aquatic Center.
So on September 13th, Peterstownship Council authorized the staff to solicit information from general contractors for the purpose of prequalifying bidders for the aquatics facility at Rolling Hills Park. Township advertised to receive prequalification applications by contractors by October 19th. There were nine contractors that submitted applications. It's our determination that eight met the standards for prequalification, and each of those firms is listed there. And it's my recommendation that Peterstownship prequalify these firms to serve as general contractors for the construction of Rolling Hills Park Aquatic Center, which would make them eligible to bid. I know there was a question asked with regard to Nello Construction because of their current situation with the school district, but having consulted the solicitor, both he and I are of the opinion that, that dispute doesn't necessarily disqualify Nello from being able to, to be a prequalified contractor on this job.
I'm not familiar with the details of what they filed, but they have alleged that access to the school district was part of their claim damages, of which did we not contribute to the passage of vehicles onto the site with our roadwork?
Oh, no, that, I think what they were talking about, and I don't know this for a fact because I haven't seen this, this lawsuit that's being proposed, but the only thing I can think of is access to their site when, as a result of COVID, because they were never impeded from getting to the, to the site of the...
You may be called to testify to that.
Yeah.
Well, the township hasn't been named in that, have they?
No. The claims are between Nello and the, and there's claims from the school district against Nello, and none of that has anything to do with the township.
And one name of the first group seemingly is missing, the Glancy and son?
Yes. You want to talk about that?
Yeah. One of the questions, the prequalification sheets are actually in front of you, and one of the questions is, over the past, I believe it's, there's a number of years, have you done a project as the general contractor? Have you done five projects as the general contractor valued at over $10 million? They had, they could not meet that threshold. They did not have five projects as a GC over $10 million in, in the past, I believe it was five years.
So it's 10 years.
10 years, okay, there you go.
How many did they have?
Four. But all of the other firms had five. All the other firms met the qualifications as stated in the prequalification sheet.
How did we come up with five instead of four, or instead of three, or instead of six?
It's arbitrary. It's arbitrary, but the, you know, the whole purpose of attempting to prequalify contractors, and quite frankly, this is work to the township's benefit, you know, before doing this, we used to get contractors, and we were the largest job they did, as opposed to someone who has a demonstrated ability to do projects of the size that we are. So it is an arbitrary number, but it's, you know, the question is, is it a reasonable expectation and, and, you know?
Why do I rather have them than Nello?
The one point I make with Glancy, they actually did submit last time for prequalification and did not meet the thresholds to be prequalified, so they submitted again, and yet again, do not meet the thresholds.
I don't know much about the contractor that's being excluded. I've had no experience with them. I know Nello has been in litigation on a number of projects throughout Western Pennsylvania. You want to speak to what you're aware of, Frank? No, my experience with them has not been favorable, in my opinion. Is that related to Glancy or to Nello? No. But I haven't had that many cases with, but I... But you, you're an advocate for Glancy being included. Well, I'm not advocating, I'm just trying to figure out, like, you know, if they had one, I can understand. I just didn't know where we got the five. I mean, five...
If you're going to train such criteria, though, we should go back out and do this all over again, because I think at that point, at that point, what you bring into question is, are there other people out there that would have qualified had that criteria been that? And I think you would have to give everyone a chance to do that again.
I don't want to open that can of worms. It's just, you know, it just seemed to me that, you know, what if you did four $10 million projects in the last four years, and somebody did five, but they did them, you know, year in...
did five, but they did them, you know, year one, two, three, four, and they just did one?
I understand.
To me, that doesn't sound, I mean, I think the timing of when they did them makes a difference.
I understand what you're saying.
But I understand what you're saying, and I don't want to rock the boat, but I'm just saying, I mean, where are we getting, you know, where did we get this, I don't know.
Didn't we approve this form some time ago?
Yes.
Yes.
So, did we change it based on what the project is?
No.
Or is it?
No, in fact, and correct me if I'm wrong here, you approved that form when we first went out and pre-qualified bidders, and they did not change for this time around, pre-qualifying bidders for the same project.
So really, probably, or it's not appropriate, no, if we want to revisit it in the new year with new people, we can.
Okay, thank you.
Yours, no motion?
Yeah.
Not yet.
We need a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion that council pre-qualify these firms, you don't need me to name all eight of them, do you?
No.
To a service general contractors for the construction of the Rolling Hills Park Aquatic Center, and therefore eligible to submit bids.
Second.
Second.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. Payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the payroll and bills, payroll was $391,000 this past period, that's payable with the additional checks I just signed, is about a million. The largest payments, as you may guess, are to A. Libroney for work at the Rolling Hills Park, I move that we approve these as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondents, anything we need to talk about? Minutes, anybody want to talk about any of the minutes? All right, miscellaneous.
We have our rate quoting for hospital station for next year, the initial number that we were given was a 20% increase, we went out and shopped that against other providers in Western Pennsylvania, UPMC has reduced their proposed rate increase to 13.64%, in addition to that, we were able to get them to give us a premium credit equal to a half a month's premium cost, so which brings down the effective increase next year to 9.4%. And where that may seem high, the thing that I need to remind you of is that we've been on a string of zeros, this 3% was simply the taxes associated with the Affordable Care Act, this is another zero, and I think someone last year prophetically said, at some point, this is going to catch up to us, and there will be a rate increase, and that's what you're seeing here, our claims last year actually exceeded our premium, and that's why you're seeing that rate increase. And it's, but it's my recommendation that we place this with UPMC for the upcoming year.
You're in motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Second, discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else on miscellaneous?
Well, you have in your Haddocket, a report from Seth Coons concerning the upcoming zoning hearing board, I don't know if you need to speak about that, the only case it's of any consequence, there's somebody requesting a variance on lot coverage, from what I understand, it's the Planning Department staff's recommendation to be denied, so I don't know what the zoning hearing board's going to do with it.
You have two other ones for Peters Township Sanitary.
Yeah, well, as far as I'm concerned, they're not too consequential, but what they're trying to do is, if you recall years ago, they purchased a piece of property for the purposes of putting in a pump station to service the, to provide sewerage service to the area over on Churchill Road as it enters Bethel Park. What they want to do is, is to get a variance so that the building for the substation is contained on a much smaller lot, and they'd like to sell off the piece of property they have that can actually, I don't know if there's a home on it still?
There is.
Yeah, to sell off that home. My only thing with it is, and it's going to be our position with the zoning hearing board, and if they allow that, if in fact the pump station is ever abandoned, that the lot be incorporated back into the property in which it came from.
So is the, if I could just ask, one is a variance more than 50%, so the acreage minimum is .5, the other one is .33 variance, is that where the pump station's going?
Yes, the pump station's on that small, beyond the small track that they create, so, yes. The house itself doesn't require variance, it is the pump station that requires a variance. And if anyone ever comes through their senses, what will happen is the pump station will be abandoned, and all of that sewerage will travel by gravity through Bethel Park to the treatment plant in South Park, but as of right now, Bethel Park's not prepared to accept that.
Okay, so that doesn't flow in the direction of, it can't go the other way, it'll have to go to South Park.
Well, the pump station allows it.
Well, yeah, what happens is the pump station drives it back up to the top of, towards Churchill, and by gravity back this way.
Any comments? Anything else?
Just under miscellaneous, I wanted to just take a minute to reflect that this Thursday is Veterans Day, and just say thank you to all of our Peters Township veterans, ask that people who know veterans acknowledge their service, and wish them all good Veterans Day.
I'd like to extend that to all active service people, too.
Okay, anything else? All right, next agenda, any items?
Do you expect to have the Sharpshooter Program on the agenda for the next meeting?
Well, I guess I would ask for what purpose?
No, I just, people have been asking about it, so I just didn't know if it was going to be coming up or not, because we haven't approved that, they're going to, they still have to apply for that.
Yeah, and they have made application for that, so, let me talk to Chief Grimes to see whether or not.
It's not urgent, I'm just, and then the only other thing, usually around this time of the year, we look at who is going to be interested in being reappointed to board positions, and usually Ton works on that, so we.
And he has done that, but I'll be honest with you, and council, tell me if you want to do it differently, I was assuming since these appointments would be made in conjunction with the reorganization meeting, that we would be waiting for the three new members to do the interviews.
That's not what I was asking, I wanted to know what positions were open, so that I could perhaps encourage people who might be interested and have said they're interested.
Sure.
I know, I mean, I can obviously guess there'll be an opening on Park and Rep because of unfortunate passing of Mr. Earhart, but what else?
We can give you that, because people were to respond to us by last week, so.
Right, it's just to encourage people, some people have asked about, I talked to a lot of people, thank you, no.
Do we have an executive session?
Apparently a very brief one.
Okay, well, Frankie, anything else, we have a brief executive session.